Well, good evening. Tonight, we have two meetings before us. The first is a Public Housing Authority Commission meeting, and the second, of which most of you are here for, is our City of Chandler Study Session, Council Study Session. So first, we're going to, again, initiate our Public Housing Authority Commission meeting, which I'm now calling to order. Clerk, please take the role.
Chairman Hartke.
Here.
Commissioner Rowe.
Here.
Commissioner Deereman.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner McLeimans.
Here.
Commissioner Wong.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Here.
Commissioner Orlando.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, tonight, we have two agenda items on our consent agenda, no action, but before then, I do want to ask, are there any unscheduled public appearances for the Public Housing Authority? All right, seeing none. Commissioners, what is your pleasure tonight?
Chairman.
Commissioner.
I move for the approval of the Monday, June 24, Public Housing Authority Commission meeting.
Second.
Two item consent agendas.
Second by Commissioner Orlando. Any comments or questions, Commissioners? All right, please poll the commission.
Commissioner Deereman.
Yes.
Commissioner Rowe.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
Commissioner McLeimans.
Yes.
Commissioner Wong.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Commissioner Orlando.
Yes.
Chairman Hartke.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. This concludes our Public Housing Authority Commission meeting. Next, we have a City Council Study Session, and again, I would like to call that our meeting to order. We have everyone in appearance, and first item of business is our service recognitions. City Manager, and I would like to, sorry, come up in front, and I think, Councilmember McLeimans, I think you're person this time.
Thank you, Mayor. This time, I would ask our City Magistrate, David Fuller, to come forward and make his presentation.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Councilmember McLeimans, Councilmembers, Hairo Garcia works for the court. He began working for our municipal court on June 21, 2004, as a Clerk I. He was assigned to the customer service team. On February 3, 2019, Hairo was promoted to the position of Court Clerk III. He's dependable, he comes in prepared to work, and readily offers his assistance when needed. He's been a great addition to the court's training team. We're excited to have Hairo in his new role, where he will continue to help the court achieve its goals in the coming years. I wrote, on a personal note, I asked about you. His personality makes him very approachable and respected because of his endearing charm and sense of humor. For example, each year, the city has an annual pumpkin contest, and Hairo is always a great contributor to the court's entry. In fact, one year, he was the entry. Himself up as the pumpkin, and I'm told, that year, we won. So, Hairo, you're a warm, kind-hearted, and eternally upbeat person, and we value you so much. Thank you so much for your hard work and dedication.
At this time, I would ask Stephen Urno, our Acting Community Services Director, to come forward and make his presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would like to invite Mauro Monguwa to the front, please. So Mauro started with the City of Chandler in June 2004, when he was hired as a regular part-time recreation leader I in the Recreation Division. In this position, he was assigned to sports fields maintenance, where he dragged and prepared fields for upcoming reservations. Mauro was in recreation for about eight months, when he was promoted to full-time groundskeeper with Parks Operation Division. In this position, he performed duties such as trimming, pruning, trash control, and sports field preparation. In September 2006, he was promoted to Parks Maintenance Technician, and it's a position he holds today after 13 years. Mauro takes great pride in keeping the parks green and safe for the citizens of Chandler by completing irrigation repairs, and by maintaining and repairing playground equipment. In addition, he's a certified backflow prevent tester, and is always looking for ways to learn more about plumbing, electrical, and other things to help him perform his duties better. Mauro is the first step, if, first one to step up, if someone needs help and is very committed to his division, the department, and the City of Chandler. In addition to that, in his free time, he's a devoted family man who helps out the community by volunteering 16 hours per week at Queen of Peace Church in Mesa. Mauro is a very important and valuable asset to the team, and we commend him for his 15 years of service with the City of Chandler. Outstanding service, so thank you very much, Mauro.
I would ask Kim Moyer, Cultural Development Director, to come forward and make her presentation.
Thank you. Mayor, Council, I'd like to invite Michelle McLennan up to recognize her 20-year service Michelle started at the city in 1999. She became the manager of this Chandler Center for the Arts in 2014, and serves as the president of the Cultural Foundation. With the Dedicated Board of Directors, the foundation's endowment has nearly doubled in the past five years, from 1.9 to 3.4 million. Michelle was honored in 2006 with a fellowship from the Virginia G. Piper Charitable Trust, and is vice president of the Arizona Presenters Alliance. Her vision for the art center has been recognized by the Phoenix Business Journal as an outstanding woman in business in 2016. She was instrumental in the recent rebranding of the center, as it's getting ready to launch its 30th year. Her passion is providing space for diverse cultural experience and creating lifelong art lovers. Michelle serves in Chandler Rotary, and has most recently became the manager of Arts and Culture, supporting the new Chandler Museum. She has been an invaluable asset to our division. Her enthusiasm and infectious smile is contagious. Thank you, Michelle, for your dedication to the city and the art center.
I would ask Leah Powell, Neighborhood Resources Director, to come forward and make her presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to call up Judy Ramos. Judy Ramos, Neighborhood Programs Administrator, began her city career in 2004. Judy first joined Chandler as a Planning and Development Research Assistant. In this position, Judy worked with the Community Development Program, and wrote the five-year consolidated and annual plans for CDBG. For the last 14 years, Judy has been bringing residents together to work towards preserving and enhancing their neighborhoods. She provides education and support to over 300 registered homeowner associations and traditional neighborhoods. Judy also serves as a staff liaison for the Neighborhood Advisory Committee, and has served on the Customer Connection Committee. Last year, Judy took on the task of rewriting the Neighborhood Grant Program Guidelines, and created new grant opportunities. This redesign led to a record number of requests for funding, including the new trap, neuter, and return grant to address the issue of feral cats. Judy, we thank you for your service to our community and to the City of Chandler. Thank you.
And last, I would ask Police Chief Sean Duggan to come forward and make his presentations.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to ask Detective Mark Stevens to come forward, in recognition of his 25 years with the City of Chandler. So Mark began his career with the Chandler Police Department back in 1994, after serving five years as a deputy with the San Diego County Sheriff's Department. And throughout his career with the City of Chandler, Mark has proudly served as a patrol officer, bicycle officer, a gang detective, a narcotics detective, a criminal intelligence detective, and most recently, as a background investigator and polygraph examiner. In 2004, Mark was recognized as the Officer of the Year while serving as a member of the Intelligence Unit. In 2006, Mark received the Exceptional Merit Award for his diligence and exemplary work as an Intelligence Unit technician. Currently, Mark is assigned to the Professional Standards Unit, serving as our polygraph examiner, where he helps ensure we identified the most talented and qualified people to help to bring onboard Team Chandler. Mark is highly respected among his fellow polygraph examiners in the valley, and has been a high performer for the past 25 years. And he has professionally, and, just an incredible reputation, not only in our department, but across the valley. The Chandler Police Department and the citizens of Chandler, we benefited greatly from Mark's unwavering character, his work ethic, and his newfound sense of humor. So Mark, private joke, but he got me today, he got me a good one today, so. So Mark, thank you for 25 years, and very proud of you. Well done. And I'd like to ask Officer John Allison to come forward, recognizing his 25 years of service with the City of Chandler. So John began his law enforcement career actually with the Buckeye Police Department, before joining Chandler back in 1994. And after one year in patrol, John transferred to the Traffic Unit as a motorcycle officer, where he has served ever since. He was recognized early on for his motorcycle riding skills, and was asked to become a motorcycle instructor for the Department of Public Safety, a position normally held just by DPS officers. Currently, John is the senior member of our Traffic Unit, and has been a valued member for the past 24 years. And now, for more than two decades, he's played an instrumental role, providing training to newly-signed motor officers, and ensuring that they know how to ride in a very hazardous environment. And throughout John's career, he's instructed hundreds of riders at over 45 different motorcycle schools, held both at DPS and here in Chandler. And he also teaches traffic safety for the Department Citizens Academy and Summer Youth Academies. And over the years, John has been recognized many times for his hard work and his superior performance, and he's received numerous commendations from citizens and from fellow coworkers. But the reality is that John has an unmatched passion for his profession and for the community which he serves. In each day he comes to work, he treats people with dignity and respect, and has helped really shape our reputation as a police department in our, in our, in our community. So much so, that his daughter Ashley joined the department two years ago, and now serves as a Chandler police officer, following her father's footsteps. So John, congratulations, and thank you for all your contributions over the last 25 years.
I've picked up my notes twice prematurely, so I was gonna wait to get the head nod from you this time. The next item on our scheduled public appearances is a retirement recognition. Could Judge Traynor, please, come up, please? Michael Traynor was appointed as pro temp city magistrate in 1985, and appointed presiding city magistrate in June of 1986. And I believe you were the only city magistrate in '95, so it was to been an easy transition. Prior to his full-time appointment, he served part-time as a public defender at the Chandler Municipal Court, while also maintaining a private law practice in Chandler since 1974. Judge Traynor was a member of the Board of Directors for the Judicial College of Arizona, and dean of the State New Judge Orientation Program in 1992. He was the dean of the Judicial College of Arizona during 1998 and 1999. Judge Traynor served as the chairman of the Limited Jurisdiction Court Committee, and as a member of the Arizona Judicial Council from 2001 through 2008. Judge Traynor has been a leading source of stability and success of our municipal court system for over 30 years. He leaves behind a great legacy and a solid foundation for the future. Judge, we want to thank you for the decades of service you have provided to our community. We wish you all the best in your retirement, and I know you've had a few opportunities in which I think staff has certainly had a chance to, to share with you. Would like to give you the microphone, and also introduce, if you have anybody here, and make some comments, but I'd like to ask, Council, would anyone like to say anything before we do that? Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Judge Traynor, you are one of those people that I occasionally get the chance to talk about up here, and, 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 and just say how much we are going to miss people with not only the demeanor that you have, but the institutional knowledge that you're taking with you, but you're sharing with people as you leave, and, but Chandler has so many good quality people, and you're just, just one of those super folks, and we're gonna miss you a great deal. Thank you for your service.
Mayor.
Councilmember.
Yes, Judge Traynor, thank you for the decades and decades of service, much appreciated by us on the, on the dais, the previous councils, and all the citizens. You've given your heart to the city, and we appreciate all of the time that you spend with us, but please go have some fun. Enjoy your retirement.
Mayor. Councilmember.
It's been a long time, and I can honestly say that, you know, when I first moved here in the early 80s, Chandler was a small town, and you literally built our court system. Not many people could say that they built something and be able to see it through, and also, I think what you built was a culture, an institution, that will last way past your, your days as retirement. So, thank you, thank you very much for what you did.
Mayor.
Councilmember.
Judge Traynor, I want to thank you on behalf of all of our community for, for your service to, to Chandler. I think the fact that we had, in the, in the two and a half years I've been here, I've never heard a single peep, complaint, and those folks that are going to that, into those courts are usually not in the best of moods, but to have absolutely zero complaints come back from your department means that there's a culture over there that, that you certainly put forth, so I'm grateful for that, and I know that you'll be missed, and I thank you for your service.
Councilmember one.
Judge Traynor, I just want to say congratulations, and wish you very well for your retirement. And I only know you for two and a half years, so, but I think the citizen and the community all think, I feel like I have the opportunity to know you, I think you, you already become a legend for the city.
Judge, I, I know that we're in good hands for the future, but, you know, really, you have put so much work that has set up the stage for us to be in good hands in terms of such a well-run court, and I was thinking on Councilmember Stewart's comments, I, I think I hear a few, some comments about our police for bringing people to you, but I don't hear many comments about your, like Councilmember Stewart, I don't think I've ever heard a negative comment about feeling that they were treated improperly, or, or that unfairly in any way. So that, that is a tremendous testament that you have, you have brought to Chandler, so we want to thank you. Would you like to say anything?
Mayor, I'd like to, to thank you, and each of the members of the council, the prior mayors, and the members of the prior councils, for giving me the opportunity to serve. It has been my honor to do so, and to work with the exemplary staff that I've been able to work with, whether it be people in the court or outside the court. And I've been very lucky to have had two people who have been serving with me for a long time as court administrators. One was Joan Harfond, who served for 10 years, and then Carla Botner, who just recently retired, who'd served for 17. It is people who devote their time and their effort to do things right for the right reasons that are the reason why we get few complaints. Would want to thank you for your.
You know, if I wasn't standing right now, I would stand, so. Council, would you all come up here, please? in Judge Traynor's court system. All right, our next recognition is to the Phoenix Chapter of the National Alliance of African-American Athletes, Scholar-Athletes of the Year. And nine CUSD students were recently recognized as Scholar-Athletes of the Year by the Phoenix Chapter of the National Alliance of the African-American Athletes. So I'd like to invite Deontay Richardson, Seth Graham, and the Scholar-Athletes of the Year to please come up front and join me.
I'm already here, sorry about that. Beach to it. My name is Deontay Richardson. I'm from the Phoenix Chapter of National Alliance of African-American Athletes. First, I would like to thank the council for allowing us to be here today, especially Mr. Mark Stewart, who was able to come to our awards ceremony earlier this month. And today, I just want to tell you a little bit about an organization that's played a pivotal role in not only my life, but the life of these young men as well. The National Alliance of African-American Athletes was founded by Franklin D. Watson in Harrisburg, PA in 1989. It was then formally formed into an organization in 1992 where they strive on excelling in both the classroom as well as the athletic fields and in their communities. So today in 2019, the, the organization still stands on the endeavor of promoting community service as well as both athletic and scholarly achievement. So, I would like to introduce Seth Graham, who is one of our officers, as well as nine of the, well, a few of our Chandler athletes here that are from the area, and they're gonna introduce themselves.
All right. So if you could state your name, your school, your sport, as well as your GPA.
There you go, Davis.
Well, my name is Isaac Davis. I'm a senior at Castile. I run track and field and I like to do cross-country a bit, and I carry a 4.0 GPA.
My name is Joseph Taylor. I go to Bogut Junior High. I play football and I have a 3.0 GPA.
My name is Jackson Williams. I am a graduate from Perry High School and I, I'm a football player and I had a 3.3 GPA.
My name is Goliere Hightower. I go to Chandler High School. I'm a sophomore now. I have a 3.0 GPA and I play football, wrestling, and track.
My name is Deshane James and I also graduated from Perry High School. I also played football with this kid right next to me, and I graduated with a 3.4 GPA.
And before we take a picture, Seth, would you like to say anything?
Definitely. I'm just so proud of these young men to, to play a small part in their lives. Past four or five years, they've had their banquet here in Chandler and it's been a great opportunity to interact with them and get to know them, as was the best in their future, and thank you for having us tonight. Great.
Well, personally, I think consent agendas are exciting. So, even though people are leaving, this is the good stuff. So council, we've got 34 items on consent, and I know there's been requests for presentations on three of those. I called in for a brief presentation on item number two. Don.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item number two is ordinance number 4883. It sets the property tax levy based on tax rates applied per 100 of assessed valuation of property in the city of Chandler. State law requires that the tax levy necessary for funding the adopted budget be established by ordinance and adopted 14 days following the tax levy public hearing and final adoption of the budget. The public hearing was held Thursday, June 13th, and the tax levy ordinance will be effective immediate, immediately following tonight's action, or Thursday's action, I apologize. Now, a brief overview of the property tax levy. The city's total limited assessed value for fiscal year 1920 is just over $3 billion. The primary property tax rate established is .2581 cents per 100 of assessed value, and the secondary property tax rate established is 87 cents per 100 of assessed value. That's for a total tax rate of $1 and almost 13 cents, .1281. We take it out four places. This is just over a 1-cent tax rate reduction from the current year's rate. These rates generate $33,968,800 in property tax levy for the fiscal year 2019-20 budget. Chandler uses the primary property tax levy of about 7.8 million of that to support the day-to-day operations of the city, such as public safety, parks, community services, and et cetera. The secondary property tax levy is about 26.2 million of that, and it's used to pay the debt service on our general obligation bonds that were issued in prior years. Staff recommends approval of ordinance number 4883 setting the property tax levy based on the tax rates applied per 100 of assessed valuation of property in the city of Chandler.
Don, one question related to that. How many years has council, because again, the thriving community and, and property rates, but how many years have we, in a row, have we lowered the property rate?
Mayor, that is a good question. I believe it's been about three years now. There was a period of time where the rate actually had to go up based on the, the values taking a drop during the recession, but there has been a consistent reduction in the rate over probably about three years.
Okay, yeah, I, I know that's been, it's, it really has a chance to return some back to our citizens as well as still continue to maintain the, whether it's paying off the, any debts and bonds as well as general funds. So, council, you've been wise with this, thank you. Councilmember Lopez.
So, we get asked a lot too, is, you know, over the year, how much did their, my house go up in value, or how much in the average did Chandler's value go up? And in, again, your spiel there, it talks about the total assessed value for the city was up 8.2%. However, that also includes the addition of new construction, right? So those, it's not necessarily an apples-apples comparison that every house or on average house went up 8.2% because there was a new product coming online, is that correct?
Yes, through the Mayor, Councilmember Lopez, that is absolutely correct. The overall increase in our assessed values is a result of, about half of the increase was actually the new property that you just talked about. The other half was appreciation in property. When we look at the portion of that property that is truly residential property, the county does a separate assessment on the median value homeowner, and the median value home actually increased for 1920, 4.93% overall. So taking the tax rate down as part of this action will offset or help minimize that increase.
Perfect, thank you, Don.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
So remind me when the, the auditor, the assessor revises, is that in August, September of every year that they revise the assessed value?
Through the Mayor, Councilmember Orlando, we get our assessments in February for the city, but it's a process leading up to that where they're reviewing the assessments and there's an opportunity for citizens to appeal prior to locking it in in February that then goes into effect for the October bill. So it's, it's a process that takes almost an entire year.
And to piggyback on a little bit the mayor said earlier, the, the sticker shock sometimes when you get a tax bill, how much it really is the city's portion of that tax bill that someone needs to be, I guess we can't get this out enough. I mean, it's, every year seems like we get the same question, at least I have in the past, why is my taxes going up? And when I asked him, "Look at your bill," it crystallizes though.
Yeah, through the Mayor, Councilmember Orlando, and a very good point. Out of every dollar that a citizen pays on property taxes, only 9.8 cents of that dollar comes to the city of Chandler. The majority of a citizen's property tax bill is the school districts, that's their main funding source for their, for the students, and then also some county and special districts as well. So, you know, we'll, we'll do what we can for the share for the city of Chandler, Mayor and Council does what they can, but there is a significant portion that we have no control over as a city.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember one.
Can you say the number again? So every $1, how much do we get?
9.8 cents per dollar.
A dime.
Okay.
Under a dime.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, thank you. Next item called in was item number three by Councilmember Lopez.
Yes, I wanted to bring this again also to the attention of our public that in our public safety does more than just respond to calls. They go out there and are very proactive with our community. And this program's coming up and along with Veterans Program that we currently are running with, within our fire department, I wanted to kind of give you chief, an option to, or opportunity to tell the public about this new program we got going on.
Well, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This is actually, this program has been in place for quite some time, but every year we, we add to it, which makes it a little bit better. Item three is a resolution that allows the fire departments to enter into two separate agreements with the Chandler Regional Medical Center and the Phoenix Children's Hospital. These agreements allow our paramedic students to train with doctors and physicians in the hospital at those specific facilities. Now currently, our paramedic students, they attend a 10-month paramedic program that's in-house conducted by the Chandler Fire Department, and as a requirement for graduation, they have to complete 100 hours of clinical time in the hospital. Each student spends time in the emergency room, the ICU, the telemetry unit, the LND department, and just about every other area of the hospital. While they're there, they do shadow the hospital staff, whether it's a nurse or a physician, and under the direction of that staff, they perform skills such as patient assessments, starting IVs, intertracheal innovation, medication administration, and then of course, all the students' favorites, delivering babies in the hospital. These skills are all done in a clinical setting, they're all done under the supervision of a physician or a nurse, and we found that it's, it's very important to our, the success of our program. Our partnerships that we have with Phoenix Children's Hospital and the opportunity to work with pediatric patients or Chandler Regional Medical Center and the opportunity we now have to work in a trauma center has really helped us to increase their skillset and their ability to deliver good service out, out in the field. Additionally, the fire department is currently working towards accreditation for the paramedic program. Right now, there's only one other department in the state of Arizona that is accredited, it's fairly new, but we are scheduled in the next year and a half to have a site visit, and our goal is to become accredited. One of the tenants of the accreditation is that you do have these agreements in place, and so this will certainly meet that need. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Chief. And again, the continued partnership they have with our, our hospitals and, and the community goes a long way, again, keeping our, our citizenry safe and our firemen at the utmost, highest level of training. Thank you.
No other questions on this? And I also called in item number four. I'm not sure who's addressing that.
Mayor, I asked Don to make the presentation.
Thank you, City Manager.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. So, resolution number 5276 is brought forward based on Arizona revised, or Arizona State Legislature passed House Bill 2097 in 2018. That required governing bodies of all public safety personnel retirement system, or PSPRS, employers to adopt a pension funding policy and formally accept their share of assets and liabilities based on PSPRS's actuarial valuation report by July 1st, 2019. Today's June 24th, so we're good, and annually thereafter. The city's pension funding policy before you details the assets, liabilities, and current funding ratio of 58.4% combined for Chandler Police and Fire PSPRS trust funds. So, and this is from the most current June 30th, 2018 actuarial valuation report. The policy states that the PSPRS funding goal will be 100% by June 30th, 2027, and thereby reduces the annual employer contribution. The city will commit additional payments above the annual employer contribution to meet the 11-year pay-down plan. This projected additional payment and number of years to pay down early may be adjusted annually based on the updated actuarial report that we receive every year, could be the economic environment, or as well as just available general fund one-time dollars. The additional payment that is planned for the upcoming fiscal year 1920 is an additional 25 million. And then finally, although the new statutory requirement is to address a pension funding policy for PSPRS, Chandler's pension fund, funding policy also addresses Arizona State Retirement System. So the pension funding policy clearly communicates the council's pension funding objectives and its commitment to the city employees and sound financial management of the city.
Thank you, Don.
You're welcome.
Reason I brought this up really is, is to say again, thank you, council. I know it, there's already so many demands and so many ways that we can spend money, but to, to me, doing one of the most responsible things that we can do is to take care of those whom the city has employed and that we can guarantee them the life that we promised them, well past their days with the city. So this was a big step with that, this year was a large step, and I, I don't know how other cities, if they're too excited about having to report their plan, but I'm very excited to say that Chandler's got a good plan that takes care of its public safety and general employees, and I want to thank you, council, for having the will to do so. Any other comments on this?
Mayor.
Councilmember Orlando.
I, I 100% agree, and I like the idea that we did have enough one-time funding. You know, other cities, as you indicated earlier, Mayor, in a previous conversation, I mean, they're bonding, it's probably costing them more money for the 30-year bond than it would be to use some one-time dollars just to buy this debt down. And I think the important, not only that, we protect those individuals we had a promise to, it also helps us so that eventually the next seven, six, seven, eight years, we could then free up some ongoing dollars, which will then help us derive some future growth in whatever years we need to look at our city. So, I think it's a win-win, we could pay that debt down earlier and then turn around and be able to get some one, recurring revenues to be able to do some of the things that we want to do for the future. So, great, great job on the council on doing this, understand.
Mayor. Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. Don, great job, by the way. You always keep us up to speed on all of this. There's a lot of minutia to drive through and to wade through to get into the, the guts of what is going to make this better for us, and every time you've come to us and said, "Hey, we want to do this," or "Let's try that," they've always been good recommendations, and so is this one, so thanks for being so thorough in explaining what it, the quagmire that this is. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Council, those were the only items called in tonight, so.
Mayor.
No?
Mayor, there's two more on the next page.
Councilmember Orlando, item number seven.
Thank you, Mayor. It's always the fine print, right, Mayor? The next page, right?
Yep.
So I think we've spoken about this issue enough. I got a couple of questions. Number one, when was the zoning, and the reason why I'm asking is I know some citizens had called in or had sent letters into the city actually opposing this particular development. But correct, I'm wrong, but we did the rezoning last year to allow this to go in, correct?
Through the mayor, council member Orlando, the property was originally zoned in 2006. It was zoned PAD for community commercial uses, C2-type uses. In 2018, the zoning of the entire corner was extended and approved for three additional years. So as of today, all uses permitted are uses of C2, so the use of a car wash and offices are permitted by right, and the request for item number seven is only for site plan approval and architecture.
So I understand to help mitigate some of the citizens' concern, again, correct, I'm wrong, there was a stipulation put in by the P&amp;Z commissioner or staff, and I don't remember who put it in, again, you could clarify that, was to build a building in between both the car wash and the residence. Is that correct, that that must be done at the same time as the car wash?
Prior to going to Planning and Zoning Commission, the applicant represented that they wanted to, as a part of Phase 1, would be car wash, Building 4, Building 6, and all perimeter landscaping. At Planning and Zoning Commission, this item was actually continued to Design Review Committee because commissioners wanted to see Building 1 be built as part of Phase 1 to ensure that commercial frontage and ensure that the rest of the offices would develop, and we would just have a car wash of the building. Also, through the Design Review Committee, commissioners wanted to stress the architecture because this is our eastern gateway to the downtown community, and so the applicant went back and updated their architecture, some quality architecture, to allow for a more comprehensive gateway to our downtown, eastern gateway to the downtown. So as of today, there is a stipulation added that Building 1 will be built in Phase 1. Instead of the entire 8,000-square-foot building, it would be minimized to a minimum of 5,000 square foot. The additional square footage would be built onto Building 2 in Phase 2. So that has been stipulated, as well as clarified, that Building 1 will be built concurrently, if not prior, to the car wash.
Great. So although I think some of the citizens still may not want to see a car wash there, at least we did our due diligence and tried to mitigate some of the potential noise, and I know there's hoses and there's water, that's all put up on the front of the property, which, again, I know may not be some of the citizens' fantasy or the thing they wanted to see, but I think the fact that we worked with the citizen applicant to at least mitigate some of their concerns is kudos to the staff and to the P&amp;Z commission.
And to add to that, the applicant, the building material that they use and making sure that their equipment is internalized, and they did work as hard as they could to get that car wash as far away from the residential as possible.
And kudos to them, obviously, for working with us, so, thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
All right, and counsel member Orlando, you, one other item you'd like more info
Mayor, we're always looking at proactive, preventive, risk mitigation, emergency response, and this thing, when I saw this originally, I said, "Wow, this is something that we probably should have a little more dialogue on," and what it is and what we're doing here, even though it's mandated, I think some of the stuff we've done in here, we've been doing on our own anyway, but let's, I'll let the staff presentation with your permission, Mayor.
Through the mayor, council member Orlando, the consultant contract, which is the subject of the council item tonight, 24, is necessary to assist the utility in the creation of a risk assessment and emergency response plan, now required by the federal government through the Water Infrastructure Act passed last October of, October of 18. The new law requires community drinking water systems serving more than 3,300 people to develop or update risk assessments and emergency response plans. Fortunately for our utility, we've already done several studies in advance of this, so we'll be able to dovetail that work very nicely into this new study. Those studies include the continuity of operations plan that we worked with with our fire department, a facility vulnerability assessment that we have been working with our police department, our homeland security risk assessment that we completed with our IT department about a year and a half ago, and then, of course, our American Public Works Association reaccreditation that we're embarking on now. Community water systems of over 100,000 residents require a risk assessment to be completed by March 31 of 2020, and an emergency response plan to be completed by September 30 of 2020. Each of these two plans have a long list of requirements that must be completed and documented in a prescribed manner with a letter certifying completion of that respective plan and respective date to the federal government by those due dates, the March and the September due dates. But since we have already done an awful lot of work along those lines, we'll be able to work with our consultant and pull up all that together fairly effectively. Any questions?
No, Mayor. Like I said, it was just, it was intriguing that we're actually way ahead of the game on this one, and making sure the safety and security of the citizen Chandler comes first, so kudos again to you and your department and the other departments that work with you to do some of these plans way up front before, quote, "was mandated."
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions or comments on this item? All right. Thank you, Mr. Newtonson. Anyone have any other items for tonight before we resume into our exec session? All right, seeing none. This closes our study session.